Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Mayor Goodman is on the phone. Ms. Quigley?
Yes, I am.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, your first item of business is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
It's the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you. Your second item is to approve the agenda. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A five-star.
I'll consider that an aye. Motion passes.
Next is to receive your general manager's report. We do have a few items to share with you. First, we'd like to recognize the RTC superstar of the quarter. This hard-working staff member has gone above and beyond his normal job duties by working extra hours under a multitude of circumstances. To help mitigate traffic impacts, our traffic management technicians were on hand at a T-Mobile Arena to assist with traffic flow during the NHL hockey season. In addition to working the majority of regular-season-hour games, this team member volunteered to cover the majority of playoff games, which included extended coverage hours with limited advance to notice. This person is also heavily involved in a collaborative pilot project to test new transit-signal priority technology with the RTC's transit team and project contractors. He continually demonstrates his passion of learning and working with complex emerging technology. So please join me in honoring Jose Rodriguez from FAST. Jose! Come on up. Come on up, and our board would like to recognize you.
Do you have a speech? Do you want to say something?
I would like to thank everyone here for giving me the opportunity to make such an impact for the region in general. It's been amazing. I just can't wait to remember more and be free.
Well, we'll have you guys stand up for just a minute, because next, we'd like to recognize an operator from Keolis, Michael Powers. Do we have Michael with us? Do we have Michael? Yay, Michael. Thanks for coming up. Mr. Powers is an outstanding team leader in the HVAC department and was integral in the development and implementation of the comprehensive summer readiness campaign for the bus air conditioning. He has honed a critical skillset in diagnostics and repair of the intricate RTC bus systems. As technology has advanced, so have the complexities of climate control. Mr. Powers has committed numerous hours to working with the system's manufacturer to develop detailed inspection and testing processes. His dedication to passenger comfort and creating solutions to multifaceted problems truly sets him apart. So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, this is a very appropriate time to be recognizing your skillset.
I appreciate my hard work being honored here.
And I think we have millions of passengers who appreciate your hard work. So, thank you. You can go ahead and sit, have a seat. Now, I would like to hand it over to Deputy General Manager MJ Maynard to provide updates on our fixed route and pair-transit focus groups and snapshot of the state of the system. You have, as a board, asked MJ to give you an update on both of these topics, and she is ready to report.
Great, thanks, Tina. And Tina's right, as part of our ongoing reporting of our transit system, we'd like to provide you with a year-over-year look at transit and pair-transit operations for fiscal year 18. Okay. So, from a year-over-year comparison, transit ridership was generally flat compared to last year at a .3% decrease. The good news is that general market ridership increased by 1.2%, or an additional 632,000 trips were taken on our bus system, which bucks the natural trend of decreasing bus ridership. So, to put this in perspective, national bus ridership was down approximately 4% around the United States according to the latest industry stats. However, in the resort corridor, transit ridership has decreased by 6.4%, or approximately 814,000 less trips were taken in fiscal year 18. So while we've seen a very slight improvement in the resort corridor ridership trends in fiscal year 18, as previously reported to you, the ridership decline, which began in November of 2015, has continued with total ridership down 6.2 million trips. The decrease in ridership is also reflected in our fixed route revenue, where we experienced decreases across the board. As you can see, the biggest drop is 9% in the resort corridor, where revenues decreased by approximately $1.8 million. So here's a year-over-year comparison of our strip revenue. Please note that each bar is from November to November of each year. Again, November 2015 is when we began to see the impact of other mobility options in the resort corridor. So as noted on the slide, we've yet to hit a plateau where revenues are stabilized as sort of our new normal. From November of 2014 through June 2018, we've cumulatively lost $12.6 million in fare On-time performance remained the same during fiscal year 17 for our five-minute on-time standard, which stands at 86.8%. Really want to say thanks to the hard-working operators of both MV and Keolis for all of their efforts. The number of total road calls increased slightly by 3.4%. However, we also saw a huge decrease in heat-related shutdowns, almost a 38% drop. Aside from the technically talented mechanics of Keolis and MV and the continued influx of new replacement vehicles, the RTC fleet department has also completed the implementation of a new preventative maintenance program that enhances the performance and reliability of our buses. We have a new fleet director, and he's really been impactful. Just as a side note, almost half of the fixed route fleet now has buses that are less than five years old. So here are some highlights from our Transit amenities department. Today, there are a total of 3,377 bus stops. To date, we've pushed back 1,276 shelters, where we have the ride of way by five feet or more from the curb. And of course, we'll continue working with private property owners to acquire the necessary land to push back more shelters. Additionally, the city of Las Vegas has generously spent $510,000 on land acquisitions for easements in order to move 35 bus stops back behind the sidewalk. And in the last year, we have spent approximately 2,300 hours performing over 23,000 bus stop inspections to ensure contractor compliance for our bus stop cleaning contracts. Advertising revenue from both bus shelters and buses, which pays for the maintenance of the bus stops, has remained relatively flat. The slight decrease in sales on both vehicles and bus shelters is due to increased competition for advertising in the resort corridor. However, the addition of 10 video advertising screens at our busiest Las Vegas Boulevard bus stops and new embellishments to bus wrap advertising are expected to generate additional revenues. Excuse me. Due to a recent contract amendment for Vector Media, RTC is guaranteed to receive a minimum of $3.9 million in revenue for 2019. We'll move on to pair transit. So in comparison, the number of total pair-transit trips increased by nearly 11% to more than 1.3 million trips in fiscal year 18. This is due to the increase in the number of active clients that are utilizing our services. On-time performance decreased slightly from 95.4% to 94.3%, though we really appreciate the efforts of the trans dev operators. They work very hard on behalf of our customers to ensure they arrive safely and efficiently. They do a great job for us. With regard to our senior transportation trips on our Silver Star routes and flexible demand response, or FDR, service, we saw a 1.1% increase in the amount of trips taken. The top two utilize Silver Star routes is an FYI, and that's for both fiscal '17 and '18. It's the Sonoite, the Charleston, the Sahara route, and the 714, which is the Charleston-Hights And the number of trips that are taken on our Veterans Medical Transportation Network saw a 2% decrease year-over-year. This may be due to the fact that the number of active clients, and we define that as a client that takes one or more trips within a 12-month period, decreased by 7.3%. Since this is a service only for medical appointments, demand definitely fluctuates. In fiscal year 18, 62% of the VMTN rides were to the VA hospital. And finally, the number of mobility-trained customers increased by 14.2%. These clients have been trained to travel more independently by using our fixed route system. It's worth noting that the RTC has entered into a contract with the State of Nevada Department of Employment, Training, and Rehabilitation, otherwise known as DETER, to provide one-on-one travel instruction to people with disabilities who are seeking employment in Clark County. The RTC mobility training department will teach the prospective employees how to get to and from their job sites using our system. The current contract in place with DETER is effective through December 2022. Our Ride RTC, that's our mobile ticketing and trip planning app, has been downloaded more than 159,000 times. Customers have purchased more than a half a million bus passes since we launched the app in September of 2016. Of passes sold in fiscal year 18, 87% were our general market passes, 13% were passes purchased in the resort corridor, and overall, 9% of our overall fare box revenue is coming from the Ride RTC app. And the last item of the state of the system report is an update on our safety and security efforts. The overall operator assaults by passengers were down 16.3%, or eight incidents from year-over-year comparison. In addition to the safety enclosures for operators, we attribute much of the success to the increase of security presence and continuous safety campaigns that are instituted by MV and Keolis. I've got to hats off to them. They have a bi-monthly program now where, and I know Keolis is doing this, they're doing the positive customer engagement between the operator and customer scenario training. Passenger assault increased by 26 incidents from year-over-year comparison. While it's hard to predict when and where an incident will occur, the RTC has been working with MV and Keolis to continue reporting incidents in areas of concern. To mitigate the upward trend, we evaluate incident reports to help us allocate security officers to those areas, and I'll explain more on the next slide. So we try to mitigate assaults onboard by our buses by focusing on routes that operators report as having issues. So the operator will call into the dispatch center, and then we'll be informed. And once we get that information, we share that with our allies, Universal Security, look at the trend analysis, and then determine where to place those officers. So once that data's been analyzed, we work closely with our contractor to deploy officers, and we call these focus routes. Additional security officers are deployed to those focus routes. As we know, that even the mere presence of officers onboard a vehicle can in many cases eliminate a problem from occurring. As this slide shows, the number of hours that were spent patrolling the focus routes versus non-focus routes is significant. In other words, we deploy our security resources as identified by the incidents. So we will continue to update the board on this effort. And that is my report. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you, MJ. Comments? Mayor?
Yes, thank you. That was a great presentation. It's good to know the state of our operations. Recently, the city of New York, I think, looked at the impact that Uber and Lyft and those demand transportation services are having on the local transportation services, whether it's taxi cabs or the bus service and all. And I wonder if that's something we shouldn't be looking at at this time, that we should understand what the impact is to our services and to our operation? Because obviously, we'd like to grow transit as a solution in our community, and understanding what the impact of these services are in our community, I think, is important.
Agreed, Mayor.
Thank you.
I echo your concern. It's a story that we're following closely, that just last week, Boston group Bruce Schaller came out with a study on exactly how TNCs are impacting, and we are in fact seeing that congestion is increasing as a result of the TNCs. And of course, bus ridership is projected at this point to be surpassed by ridership by TNC rides. So, a trend that not only RTC will be paying attention to, but the industry as a whole and agree, it is something through policy and probably in pricing that is each community is going to have to learn to address.
And you know, as we're limited in our roadway space, we need to look at how we use that space efficiently. If we're adding more cars when we were really trying to get more cars off the road, that is problematic. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, Carolyn Goodman here. Could I ask you a question when everybody's through?
Go ahead.
Thank you. MJ, just a question, and you may have touched on it, but where are you with the assessment of the effectiveness of the Lyft handling special needs service beyond the service area? Did we have anything back? That's question number one. And then if you have some report or when you're going to have that, if in fact Lyft can service the people that are outside the service area?
Mayor Goodman, that was a question Commissioner G. asked at the last meeting. We anticipate with the results of the pair-transit peer review that we'll hear that some agencies are in fact choosing to provide service outside the service area using a method like Uber, Lyft, and taxis. So we'll have more for you on that. At this point, you know, the goal of this small pilot was to enhance the customer experience and save money to...
She's talking about within the existing service area, though?
Right. No, that's...
Beyond the service area...
But you're talking about...
Yeah, beyond our current service area of the families that have come before this board so many times requesting that they're just beyond the service area and to go back to the old. And I know we were exploring an effectiveness of Lyft being able on a regular basis to service these clients.
And so, we'll have a presentation in the board in October, and I believe we'll probably hear that as something that some of the other agencies are utilizing, is Lyft and/or Uber and taxis, to provide service outside of the service area.
And could we add to the report, unless it's already inclusive, the obligation of the RTC to protect itself with... We should go in that direction with an insurance umbrella that covers accidents. In addition, Lyft must have their own insurance that's adequate. But higher than that, we must protect the RTC. So if we could just be sure you've got the insurance umbrella in place for that liability exposure, should that be the resolve of the report, that it is recommended, go ahead and use Lyft as a vehicle to do the outer rim areas?
Will do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner.
I just wanted to add something, too. This is Lois Torqueneau. Mayor, you're talking about adding the outer areas that were done before are all outer areas. I couldn't quite hear.
I'm sorry, yes. The areas, we've had so many passionate families come before us...
Right, right.
You know, public comment, and it really, and this has been ongoing for quite a while, and I know we all care and would like to be able to service them, but it seemed reasonable that subcontracting with Lyft, but to those pre, what was it, 211 route standards, they would pick up that, or at least could immediately pick it up if the RTC commission sees its way that that is something, rather than extending the route, which creates so many other financial issues for the RTC.
Okay, I understood. I couldn't hear the whole thing, but I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
This is Chris. I was going to pick up on the same thing, but I think we're all on the same page as far as that. So you're saying the number-one decline is the issue of the TNCs?
That's based on our analysis, yes.
Okay. Are there other causes that we're not dealing with?
You know, we've turned over every rock to look at that. We also follow the trends of all of the other services provided in the resort corridor, including McCarran passenger count, LVCVA count, monorail, the number of cars that are being rented, and taxis. And we know that taxis, their ridership to date is down over 13%. So we've looked at the way we collect fares, and really, it has to do with just the services that are normally hailed, like a taxi or for our bus, stopping at a bus stop. We've found that it's been most likely Uber and Lyft compared to the trips, they've seen a significant increase in their ons and offs.
So unfortunately, when the discussion was happening legislatively, they had an opportunity to not include the strip and let the TNCs only deal with the residential because taxis don't bother with that residential, in my opinion. And that didn't happen. So now, we do have to take a look at it, but it's an interesting quagmire, because you're going to open that up, I have a feeling legislatively, to have to deal with that. Now, the one thing New York was dealing with, too, is a number of suicides that have gone up. They said in a report this morning with drivers, and I don't, I couldn't...
Taxi cab drivers.
Taxi cab drivers, because I think the loss of income that's coming into them, plus the hours. So there's working condition issues, even within the taxi industry, that they need to take a look at. The surcharge, garbage surcharge of three bucks to use my own credit card, which was a... Anyway, I would not have voted for that, let's put it that way. All those other factors come in, so if there's going to be legislation, we really need to look at the whole package and make sure that even if you are going to maintain your TNCs, that they're being paid a living wage as well, so that you have a stabilized course. Because a lot of the taxi drivers, they're doing 12-hour, 14-hour shifts, back injuries, there's a lot of other things going on that are impacting their riders as well. So if we're going to look at this, let's look at the whole package, so it's not just picking one industry over another. There's flaws within both of them that need to be corrected. And then I was going to, Carl, the other day, I was driving down Pecos, and I noticed there were no covered seating areas from Rawhide to Bautrop. Most of that's Mr. Gibson's area, but maybe just, I don't know where it is on your chart, but it was a residential component that maybe we should be taking a look at, just as you're looking at your numbers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, MJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Next on your agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from Director Rudy Malafon.
I wanted to congratulate the RTC and this board for the, just the exciting day that we have with the opening of I-11.
Well, yeah, we're partners with you, so it's exciting.
Yes. Great to also see a lot of members of our delegation involved in the event, because they're really supportive of transportation and transit in the valley, and really give them an opportunity to speak to that, because we do often visit them and ask for a lot of funding to continue, and it's good to give them their opportunity to speak to all of us down here as we open up I-11. The other things to mention is related to I-11. We've been doing an alternatives analysis for I-11 all the way up to I-80, and we have our public information meeting to update the public about our efforts on trying to whittle down the alternatives as you get kind of north of Hawthorne there in central Nevada, whether it goes through Fallon or Fernley or some other areas that we looked at as alternative corridors for I-11, because of the language that was passed by Congress to generally follow US-95 and reach I-80. So, public information meeting to talk about that progress of that study. It's not an environmental clearance phase yet, but it'll whittle down the alternatives so that we don't spend as much time and effort on alternatives that didn't make sense for I-11 as you get into the northern part of the state. I wanted to mention also that House Transportation Infrastructure Committee Chairman Bill Schuster, who he visited here at the end of May in North Las Vegas, in fact, and he introduced or talked about his proposed bill for transportation funding. And I really appreciated his support for additional funding and addressing some things in the FAST Act. There was, his bill proposes to eliminate that large rescission of $7.6 billion of funding for transportation in 2020 that's included, baked into the FAST Act. He also talked about raising gas taxes. The federal fuel tax hasn't been raised in decades, and he talked about raising it 15 cents over several years. But, you know, it takes a lot of courage politically to say that, and I know that it at least gets the conversation going. They're saying that this bill will not likely pass this session of Congress, but it gets that conversation going and gets them discussing about real transportation solutions and funding solutions, not just financing or loans from the federal government for transportation projects. We are holding stakeholder meetings on our HOV plan update. I mentioned previously that the MGM had approached NDOT and was concerned about Hacienda HOV ramp. A lot of things have happened since we did the last update of our HOV plan, which included the Hacienda HOV ramp, and that includes the stadium and some of the extension of the monorail to the Mandalay Bay. So we think that it's best to reconsider the HOV plan updated and also include the City Parkway HOV concept on I-515 in downtown Las Vegas to look at updating our HOV plan and then moving forward with environmental clearance as necessary and get those into design and construction. On Monday, our Transportation Board meets, and they're going to be considering the award of the next phase of Centennial Bowl. That's what we call Phase 3C. That's the interchange of the 215 Beltway and US-95 in the northwest part of the valley. Las Vegas paving is apparently a bidder of about $61 million. It was quite a bit higher than the engineer's estimate, but as we looked into it and talked to some of the other contractors that pulled plans but did not submit a formal bid, that we saw that it was reasonable to award this contract to Las Vegas Paving. That's what our recommendation is to the board. Who let the dogs out?
Lois, you might want to put on a mute.
I'm very sorry. I had a channel to keep them out, and they got through. I'm going to the furthest bedroom in the house now and shutting the door. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry.
Very cute.
No problem. I just wanted to keep my comments brief and then respond to any questions. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rudy. Comments or questions? Commissioner?
Rudy, do we have any idea if monorail's gotten the funding that they were requiring? I had, I remember somebody called recently and said that there were some problems with that, and I don't know.
I'm not aware that, but I just know that they were in that phase now, trying to look for investors for that extension.
So that has not occurred yet?
To my knowledge, I haven't heard.
Okay. And then, what's the projected completion? You completely changed my Kyle Canyon turn roadway for whatever reason, I have no idea. Oh, the city construction thing out there. What's the timeline for the completion of that one? Do you know? Because then your phase comes in for the centennial.
Yes, I think that we're still about a year and a half away from completion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Next on your agenda is your consent items. They're made up of items 5 through 54 and may be taken in one motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Aye.
Next is item number 55, which is our legal counsel, and we advise from legal counsel, and we do not need to hear that item, so we can move on to item number 56, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Second time set aside for public comment, those wishing to speak to the board. Robin Kincaid.
Good morning, Commissioner Brown and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak today. My name is Robin Kincaid, and I have shared with the board in the past how the service area restrictions have affected my daughter Kayla Kincaid's access to her church, friends, and potential employment opportunities. Once again, I stand before you to pose some questions that I'm requesting answers from the commission. Cities all over the country are expanding their service for two reasons. The cities experience significant growth, and the public input has been heard. We have persons with disabilities that have been unable to visit the graves of their loved ones at the Palm Jones Cemetery or attend the Lamb of God Church on North Jones. Recently, in my neighborhood, we had a situation where our cluster mailbox, for whatever reason, water, roots, whatever, fell down, and the post office left a notice on the replaced mailbox system that we had to pick up new keys at the closest post office, which is considered the Crossroads Post Office at 6210 North Jones Boulevard. My daughter offered to... My daughter offered to take care of that task, and I thought, well, this would be a great opportunity for her to go and learn how to access and do that. But we found out very quickly that that post office, which is the only post office assigned to our address, is not in the pair transit service area. She was not able to go to the post office assigned to our address, she won't be able to go to pick up a package, to buy stamps. How can a major post office that serves thousands of households for the past 10 years not be accessible to persons with disabilities? So it's very evident that there is not a process to expand either the fixed route or the pair transit service area. I'm suggesting that we even create a premium-priced area to cover the gaps in these fingers that are not in the service area, so at least there'd be some type of service for persons with disabilities to access some very needed services. You know, we often hear that we're last on many lists in Nevada. Let's not have pair transit be the last in responding to the public's request to expand the fixed service area. In May, in public comment, I brought forward to the Commission the April 2018 Federal Transit Administration for ADA Parent Pair Transit Compliance Review Audit and the multiple findings that were noted by the FTA. In May, I requested the response and corrective action plan to address these findings be placed on the June agenda. Addressing these findings creates a path to improve on areas such as eligibility, determination, excessive trip lengths, and suspension policies. This request was ignored, and once again, I'm requesting the Commission be fully informed of the audit and approve the corrective action plan by placing it on the August agenda. Then, that didn't happen. So now I'm asking again if it could be on the September agenda. I'm asking that RTC develop a corrective action plan in response. I've seen the response that was generated. We did get a copy, but that's not a corrective action plan. We really need to address these findings. And so it's essential that this information be transparent to the public and requesting that Commissioners question the process, that neither the public or the Commission are informed of these findings or even the corrective action plans. So in conclusion, I'm asking for the audit and the request to expand the service area to be placed on the agenda. My hope is that the Commission will find a way to expand pair transit service area to meet the needs of a growing population that includes, and citizens, as you can see from my testimony today, do not have access to essential services. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Versnik, and I'm speaking before you for the ninth time. Each time I've testified, my message has been the same: Restore the service area to the way it was in 2011. I have attended these meetings each month for the last nine months, and I've seen this Commission approve projects for enormous amounts of money. I've seen new projects starting and major focus on our tourists and making transportation as convenient as possible for them. What I think this Commission is forgetting about is the members of our community who live and work here and are contributing citizens to our community, but are not able to drive and needs to depend on someone to get them to work, to the grocery store, to church, shopping, et cetera. This is a forgotten population. I know there is currently a peer review study being conducted. I'd like to know if there's an update on the delivery of the final report. Has a new company, Lucidity Marketing and Communications, I believe, begun their research? It's obvious to me, and it should be obvious to this Commission, that there is definitely a need to expand the service area. And conducting a peer study review is spending a lot of money on, spending a lot of money to find out what we already know. As I previously stated, it has been over five years since I purchased our forever home. I'm not planning on moving. I don't know how long it's going to take to have my home in the service area so my son can get to work and be independent. I'm still waiting for an answer. The purpose of testifying during citizens' participation is to bring attention to this Commission the needs of the community. I often wonder if it makes a difference. I don't know if anyone is listening, because nine months later, I'm still standing before you, asking for the same thing: Expand the service area to the way it was in 2011. I've said this before, a community that excludes even one of its members is no community at all. You are not excluding only one member, you are excluding a whole population. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Someone help just get the mic in front of that. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today? I just want to speak upon the service area, ask you guys to...
Mr. Davis, hold on just a second. We're going to get that mic on. It's on? Okay, great. Thank you.
Good morning. I just wanted to ask you guys to ask some of our writers, ask people who are at some of our committee meetings, who represent people who are outside of the service area. There's a growing need, and people are asking every day, when are we going to expand the service area? When are we going to expand the service area? Those people need an answer and deserve an answer, and we all need to make sure that we try to do what's right for those people in those parts of the community who don't have transportation. Please do your best to find out what those people's needs are and meet them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board under public comment? Close this portion of public comment. Mayor Lee?
I just have a question. Maybe I'm confused, but we, the circle was lessened for some particular reason, maybe it's financial or something, but I'm recognizing the growth that's going on in North Las Vegas and everywhere else seems to be making this circle where it would become bigger rather than smaller. What is the...
What's the policy?
What's the story? I mean, obviously, we're growing. We will never keep that circle that it is now, where it's at, if we're growing. And I recognize that maybe someone, I don't know that anybody here is from North Las Vegas and hasn't contacted me, but I do want to recognize we are growing, and that circle should probably grow.
So the federal mandate...
Why don't we...
You want to save that for our October meeting when we have?
Have staff brief Mayor Lee.
Okay.
It's a valid question, but I don't think we're properly posted to discuss that one, and we don't want to be, we're in Boulder City. We certainly don't want to insult the mayor and his staff as far as protocols and such. And Mayor, thank you.
That would be fine. I'm just trying to reach out and learn.
Sure. Note it.
I think it might make some sense, because it was 2011, and it was due to financial issues. So maybe we have a couple of us from the board that are interested in working on a subcommittee as we work through what that direction could be, what the financial change might be, and involve some of the parents from the disabled community.
Okay, so what we'll do is have MJ.
That might be direction. And remember, you have a study coming to you.
Anticipating the peer review, and why don't we do that? Why don't we get together, form that, Tina?
Okay.
Mayor, thank you so much for your hospitality.
Thank you. And do you mind if I say a few words?
Please.
I don't want to break protocol here. You're the guy in charge.
No, you're the only one that can. This is your city.
Your house.
You do what you want up here.
All right. Well, so I appreciate Rudy's comments about I-11 earlier, and it really is a momentous occasion today. It's been a three-year project, just on the construction side, and it's a great collaboration between RTC and NDOT. We've had two different contractors working on different parts of this project. It's really been quite a seamless project from traffic perspective, done a great, great job. And I know it's only a small stretch of freeway, 15 miles total, but I really believe that it's, you know, it's the beginnings of a great thing that's going to increase, you know, the whole region's ability to move not only people, but freight and things like that. So I want to congratulate both entities on that, and we did have these water bottles made, only 100 of them. They're not quite as rare as Ms. Quigley's shirt right there, her Superwoman shirt. You want to stand up and show everyone? I think there's only, those are one of a kind, right?
Are you going to make me?
I'm going to make you, yes.
You are my loss.
So, yeah, that's the million-dollar shirt. These will probably be worth about $100,000 one day, but we wanted to pass these out to certainly the RTC staff and NDOT staff that are here today, the board members. We may have enough to go around for those who want them, who are in attendance today. We'll probably save a few back, 20 or so, for some of the other dignitaries today. But we weren't going to have the opportunity to really say much once we're out there. I understand, like, 500 RSVPs, close to that today. So huge event we're going to have today, and so thank you for letting me say a few words about that.
Hold back, too, for mayors?
Yes, and we have some from our, for our city of Las Vegas folks as well.
Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.